...project today.
Republican Representative Mike Pence opposes the health care bill. He recently hosted a town hall meeting in Bluffton, Indiana to discuss the health care issue. This has a little less than an hour and a half.
Welcome to the Arts Commerce and Visitors Center here in Bluffton. This is a building we're pretty proud of and a lot of events happen here. And also, as I said before, just welcome to Bluffton. We have quite a few elected officials in the crowd and I'd introduce all of them, but I know I'd miss somebody and then I'd be in trouble. But we're glad you're here. It's Congressman's custom to begin each one of these town hall meetings with an invocation, and Ed Schwartz from Loving Shepherd Ministries is here to do the honors for us.
All who are able and willing, let's stand and pray together. Our Father God, it is such a privilege to come before Thy throne in prayer. Prayer is a gift and we're thankful for this opportunity. We know, Father, that we have an expressed interest in things that happen here on earth and certainly in the United States, certainly here in Indiana, and we're thankful for those in government like our Congressman who have a heart for Thee and a heart for people and a heart for doing what's right. So we're thankful for Him and we pray, Father, that You would continue to give Him grace and strength every step of the way, that You would be with He, His wife Karen, and their family, that You would protect them and keep them from harm. We recognize that there are always things that try to get into our families' lives and into our own lives that are spiritual in nature, emotional or physical or whatever. We just pray that that would protect them and their family. We're thankful, Father, for His heart for the military, for those in the armed forces. We're thankful for His heart for family. We're thankful, Father, for His heart for pro-life and, Father, for those things that are going to be instrumental in the issues related to marriage. We're thankful for these things. Above all, Father, we just pray that Thy name would be glorified in everything that happens and that today, Father, we would all express ourselves in love, esteem, and respect. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Paul Graham gets a gold star. If you would remain standing or re-stand, if you will, as Officer Andy Ellis from Bluffton PD leads us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now you may be seated.
Thanks for coming up.
I think I said this last time, but you may wonder why one of the few Democrats in Wells County is introducing a Republican Congressman, but it's because not only have we become good friends over the last 10 years, but also we do agree on the ultimate ends. If we don't agree on the methods, we all agree what we want for our country and what's right and what's wrong. Elected to Congress in 2000, has it been that long?
Yeah.
And frequent speaker at our annual prayer breakfast, join me in welcoming my friend and our Congressman, Mike Pence. I'm gonna have to leave. Did I tell you that?
Yeah.
Okay. Apologize for...
It means a lot to have you here. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank those who started us off on the right foot spiritually today. I came in rushing, trudging down through the snow from Fort Wayne. My apologies for my tardiness, but thanks for getting us started on the right foot. And to...I'm thinking that's Ellis 2.0 that did the pledge for us. Thank you for the service of this mayor and his fine son to this community. We...I would echo the esteem and the friendship, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thank you for making us so welcome again, and we appreciate your leadership in the community every day. Welcome all. This is our first town hall meeting in Bluffton this year, but I'm very grateful to the diehard people of Wells County and particularly those of you who drove some distance that made an effort to be here today through inclement weather. I do want to apologize to all the attendees for my tardiness, but I'm particularly impressed at the size and dimensions of this crowd, given the difficulty that we're facing on the roads today. If this is your first town hall meeting, let me welcome you. As some of you may have received in the mail from us, we sent out a report about town halls that we did recently, and throughout my nine years of service, we've done town halls on a very regular basis all across the district. My wife says that town hall meetings are my antidote to Potomac fever. By that she means that things that may sound like a good idea in Washington, D.C., you come home, have a town hall meeting, get a little attitude adjustment. So thank you all for coming and offering us that. We only have two rules about town hall meetings, and it's especially true today since we are joined by the folks at C-SPAN who will be broadcasting this town hall meeting nationally in the coming days. The first rule is, I appreciate it if you call me Mike. Hoosiers are kind of hardwired to stand on ceremony, but I appreciate it if you don't. Don't worry about titles. And if you call me Mike, I'd appreciate it if you shared with me your first name. I'd be grateful for that, so I can address you personally as well. If I don't like your comment, I'll need your social security number and your current address. The second rule is, don't feel that you have to end your statement with a question mark. I am here to answer questions you have and share a few thoughts, but most importantly, I'm here to listen. It is a tradition in this district that we start the year listening, and now more than ever, I think it's important that Washington, D.C. listen to the American people and to their priorities. So please feel free just to make a comment. Don't be self-conscious about the additional press that's here. We'll get you a microphone and we'll look forward to your remarks, and if there's a question in there, we'll take our best shot at it. Let me open with a couple of remarks on an issue that is breaking as we speak across the country. And despite the fact that I just returned from a trip to Afghanistan, and I'm happy to elaborate on what we saw over there, and I know there's a report coming out today about the incident that took place on Christmas Day in Detroit, and I'd like to focus on health care reform and on legislation that is moving behind closed doors on Capitol Hill as we speak today. First, let me say emphatically, and I know I speak on behalf not only of my other Republican colleagues in Indiana, but Republican colleagues throughout the Congress. We need health care reform in this country that lowers the cost of health insurance and lowers the cost of health care for the American people in the long term. Inaction is not an option. While I believe that we should scrap the current health care bill that's being cobbled together in the back hallways of Capitol Hill, I think the day after we scrap this bill, we ought to go right back to work and to develop the kind of solutions that will lift the burden of the rising cost of health insurance premiums off small business owners and family farmers. So as I stand here today and express opposition and concern about the health care reform that's being developed, please don't misunderstand that your Congressman believes that we ought to be dealing with the rising cost of health insurance in this country and we ought to be dealing with it boldly. The alternative that we have offered and supported would do a couple of basic things. Number one is we would permit all Americans to purchase health insurance across state lines, to be able to purchase health insurance the way we buy car insurance across the country, and allow a truly competitive marketplace to develop for small businesses and individuals and family farmers. Secondly, we believe the time has come for medical malpractice reform and reasonable caps on punitive damages on a nationwide basis. The reality is the cost of defensive medicine, the cost of runaway lawsuits in medical malpractice cases around the country is presenting an extraordinary burden on our health care economy and a burden on insurance ratepayers. And we need to take many of the sensible limits that we've had on the books in Indiana since 1970s and make them nationwide. Lastly, the savings that the federal government will receive with reasonable limits on malpractice claims in this country could be used to strengthen the current funds that exist in every state, including ours, that provide coverage for people with pre-existing conditions. I know my wife...I lost my job years ago when my wife was pregnant with our third, and my wife had to apply to the state guarantee fund. It was expensive then as it's expensive now. But the federal government could take the savings that we realize for medical malpractice reform and strengthen those funds and deal with those issues. I believe those three approaches continue and remain sensible incremental approach that focuses on lowering the cost of health insurance for Americans, lowering the cost of health care in the long term, and dealing with Americans that are struggling with a lack of coverage because of a pre-existing condition. The bill that's moving through Congress today, as near as we know, does not accomplish those things in the least. In fact, it...legislation that's moved through the House and the Senate, according to the Congressional Budget Office, would actually raise health care premiums for struggling middle-class families. It's extraordinary. The crisis is a rising cost of health insurance premiums in this country. It's crushing the backs of small business owners and family farmers. But according to the Congressional Budget Office, health care premiums for middle-class families, premium increases could be as much as $300 per year for individuals and $2,100 a year for families. It's extraordinary. I mean, the cure is worse than the disease for individual policyholders. And we've seen studies from industry sources, even health insurance companies here in Indiana that confirm the same, but this is the Congressional Budget Office. This is not an interest group or an industry voice. Also, the legislation moving through the Congress includes nearly $400 billion in tax increases. At least the bill, that's the current number of what passed the United States Senate. The number may go higher. We simply don't know, but more on that in a moment. You know, one of my Democrat colleagues who spoke out and opposed the bill when it passed through the House of Representatives, I quoted during the floor debate. He said, "The last thing you do in a recession is raise taxes," and that's exactly what this bill does. And the reality is that nearly a half a trillion dollars in tax increases in the midst of the worst recession in 25 years just makes no sense, and yet it's at the very center of this bill. And millions of Americans will actually also lose the health insurance that they currently have if this bill were to become law. And let me defend that statement, because the President...one of the assurances the President has given the American people as recently as his speech on Capitol Hill is that if you like the insurance you have, you can keep it. Well, apparently, the administration wasn't talking about senior citizens who have Medicare Advantage when they were referring to that, because the bills in the House and the Senate include massive cuts in the Medicare Advantage program. And so the people that have Medicare Advantage, that innovative new private insurance program that's available for millions of seniors through Medicare and obviates the need to have a Medigap policy, that goes away. You're gonna lose the insurance you have. But also, recognize, men and women, that the business of creating these massive new government-run health insurance exchanges and then allowing businesses to not offer health insurance to their employees if they just pay an 8% tax to the federal government is going to create an incentive where you are going to see, by some estimates, maybe 100 million Americans could lose the health insurance that they currently have through their employer. Now, it's not because the government would make their employer drop their health insurance. You understand? You know, I think I remember the President saying one time, "Nothing in this bill will require you to give up your insurance or, you know, give up insurance that you have through your employer." But I would say respectfully, as I've said in other forums, it's awfully hard to keep the health insurance that you have at your place of employment if your employer cancels it. And in this tough economy, and I don't have to tell Bluffton about a tough economy, and Bluffton's held its own, and it's fought hard, and the businesses here have been staying in the fight, but it's tough all over, in Indiana and around this country. Right now, most businesses are paying between 12% and 14% of their payroll in health insurance expenses. If federal government comes to your business and says, "You know what? We're gonna require you to cover health insurance," and you say, "Well, that's fine. We do." Say, "But, you know, you could cancel it and just pay us 8% and send people to these government-run exchanges." You know, what small business in this difficult economy would be blamed if they sat down with their employees and said, "Look, we love you. We love having you here, but we gotta keep the lights on and the doors open, so we're gonna cancel the health insurance we offer here. We're just gonna send you to the government-run exchange with all of its programs and complexities." And so on these three points, and there are many other objections to this bill, I think first and foremost is recognition that, according to the Congressional Budget Office and other estimates, individual premiums are likely to go up. I mentioned that, according to the Congressional Budget Office and other estimates, individual premiums are likely to go up for families as much as several thousand dollars per year if this bill becomes law, having the opposite effect of the goal of most Americans. That includes job-killing tax increases in this difficult economy, and also that millions of Americans will lose the health insurance they have. I think this bill should be opposed. It should be scrapped, and we should start over immediately on sensible health care reforms that'll lower the cost of health insurance for working families and lower the cost of health care. Last thought, and then I'd like to go to your questions. And Janine, do we have a microphone for the crowd, or are they using my microphone?
I've made an announcement. Okay, you can head to the microphones in the middle. You can queue up if you want to, the people that have comments to make. Let me just make one more comment. I believe, whatever your view of health care reform, I would hope every American is as offended as I am that legislation that will not just affect 1/6 of the economy, it will affect 100% of the American people, is being cobbled together behind closed doors where the American people, our national media, have no seat at the table. I mean, to me, it is truly appalling that after the President made repeated pledges that health care reform, negotiations over legislation for health care reform would take place on C-SPAN, on camera, in public, that now the Democratic leadership in the Congress, and I presume with the assent of the administration, have determined to negotiate this massive government takeover of health care behind closed doors. I mean, you need to look no further than the headlines from Christmas Eve and the really...really offensive back-room deals that were made, places like Nebraska and Louisiana and points in the Northeast, special deals, carve-outs for individual states. This is the kind of thing that happens when you don't do things out in the daylight on Capitol Hill, men and women. And, you know, you gotta ask yourself if the Democratic leadership in the House and the Senate and the White House only want themselves and a few special interests in the room, what are they hiding? I mean, my view is that this process ought to take place in broad daylight on C-SPAN, and the President ought to keep his word to the American people. With that, I'm gonna yield the balance of our time. We have about 60 minutes together to hear your comments, emphasis on comments and questions, and we'll respond accordingly.
I just wanna make sure if you have questions, line up here and make sure you can both line up.
Great. Line up the mics right up there.
Hello, Mike. My name is Amber.
Hi, Amber.
And I live in Burn, Indiana, and I have two children. And let me tell you, this health care debate has affected me and my family profoundly. Just the thought of the government coming and interrupting our lives further is awful. And I just have a statement here. How can health care legislation ultimately be imposed against the will of the American people when it's clearly unconstitutional? There are strong indicators that there are going to be heavy and imposed levies for those of us who refuse to pay. It is my clear understanding that it is not limited to just paying the fine, but they can also take my home, my family's home. My question to you, Mike, is where does the government get off trying to impose such an unconstitutional task when it's blatantly clear there can be...cannot be...sorry, guys. Cannot be legal habeas corpus presented to the American people which constitutionally focuses these holdings for them to answer us why?
Yeah.
And it deeply pains me to think that officials in the government could ultimately amend the Constitution so that the American people would be charged and sent to prison in their state, or do they plan to charge us with a federal crime? That's what concerns me with the back-room deals.
Yeah. Amber, thank you, and thanks for calling me Mike, by the way. Appreciate that.
I appreciate you, and we pray for you.
Thank you. We rely on that. Let me also commend you. It's not a point that I raise, but it's one that you're obviously aware of as a citizen. And that is an issue that hasn't gotten that much attention publicly, but one of the centerpieces of the bill moving through the House and Senate is a mandate that every American purchase health insurance, which is unprecedented in American history, and I believe it is unconstitutional.
It is.
And would be immediately challenged in the federal courts if the President were to sign this bill into law. Now, why do I think that? It is because of a simple notion that this legislation would be the first time in American history that your federal government found that it had the power to order you to enter into a contract for goods or services. People will be very quick to say, "Well, but wait a minute. I have to purchase health insurance if I have a car." Right, but federal government doesn't require you to buy a car yet. We are in the car business now, so I'm not... Don't give them any ideas. But they don't require you to buy a car. You buy a car if you want to get a car. If you get a car, you know what? You have an obligation to be responsible on the road. This is by virtue of the fact...Amber's point is so well-taken. By virtue of the fact that you are either born an American citizen or you have become an American citizen through naturalization process, that you have an obligation to spend several thousand dollars a year, whether you need it or not, whether you want to or not, on health insurance. And I have to tell you something. Number one, I do believe, Amber notwithstanding, I think most Americans don't, in the midst of all this debate over the government takeover of health care, haven't really focused on that issue very much, but it's there. It's real. Number two, my 18-year-old son says that all of his liberal high school friends who come and give him a hard time every time they see me on television, he brings up this mandate to them, and they are stunned. He says, "Dad, none of them have any idea that when they get out of college, they're gonna be required to purchase health insurance, whether they want to or not. Might wanna buy a car with that $1,500 bucks? Sorry, you're buying health insurance 'cause Uncle Sam said you had to." It's a profoundly unconstitutional issue. There's another constitutional question too, though, Amber, and that is the whole question of the equal protection clause of the Constitution. I just don't see where in the Constitution it permits a senator from Nebraska and the citizens of Nebraska to get a better deal in Medicaid than the people of Indiana.
The glory bill. It's the glory bill.
There's lots of problems here, but you put your finger on the best one. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, quickly.
If they didn't think that they could push it through, or that...if they didn't think that it could be federally challenged, why even bother? If it's a plan to take it to the Supreme Court, then why even do it?
Right.
Thank you.
Fair question. Thank you, Amber.
Good afternoon, Mike. I'm Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer.
First of all, on a personal note, thank you so much for your congressional nomination for my daughter to attend the United States Military Academy. I've never been able to thank you in person. Thank you.
Oh, gosh. Thank you for your extraordinary daughter and her commitment to the country.
She is an amazing young woman. Thank you. On a professional note, I am a respiratory therapist and have been a respiratory therapist for the last 25 years. I wanted to spin the health care reform just a bit and ask that, as we talk about health care reform, I think Medicare also needs to be looked at. We talk a lot about the Medicare cuts and the Medicare cuts, and I think what a lot of people don't understand is that when the Medicare bills were written X amount of decades ago, many of the health care opportunities that we currently have are not even a part of Medicare, therefore costing patients hundreds of millions of dollars and costing the United States government hundreds of millions of dollars. Because I'm a respiratory therapist, I'm going to speak directly to that profession. Example, we all know that lung disease is the fourth-leading cause of all DRGs, medical diagnosis, but yet when you look at the reimbursement of Medicare on those type of patients, a respiratory therapist cannot provide care to a home care patient. We cannot provide care to a nursing home patient because our services are not reimbursed, only the services of a physician or a nurse. I've been a therapist for 25 years, and yet if I go teach a smoking sensation class to a chronic obstructive pulmonary disease patient that I intimately know this disease, I am not reimbursed by Medicare. So not only is there an issue of Medicare spending and Medicare cuts, but yet where there are cost-saving ideas, they're wiped out completely because they don't want to open up the bills and include things like, well, if you look at assisted living, Medicare will pay for hospital, Medicare will pay for nursing home, yet Medicare will not reimburse for assisted living. But yet you have millions of people that would benefit and be a lot less cost if we could get reimbursement. So I guess as we look at health care reform, not only the health care insurance, but we also look at things like, how can we make the system more efficient? And unfortunately, there's a lot of organizations, professions, mine...respiratory therapy did not even exist when the Medicare bills were written. Therefore, we don't show up anywhere in them, but yet, you know, when you look at the disease processes and the amount of millions and millions of dollars that are spent on the lung disease world, and unfortunately, we are a population in the state of Indiana of smokers, and I have some amazing numbers of how many people in Indiana suffer from lung disease and yet can't even get reimbursement or their reimbursement is denied.
Right. Well, it's a great point, and particularly coming from someone in the health care industry. And I really like your focus on, you know, I don't think the American people want a health care plan as much as they want a healthy America plan.
Correct.
I think we'd like to encourage the kind of incentives in the tax code, the kind of reforms in the system that'll encourage people to live healthier lives.
Or...
And like, you've seen a number of corporations around the country that have begun to tie their premiums, the premium cost to employees based upon, have you hit your goal weight? I've got a goal weight this year. Have you hit your goal weight, right? Did you quit smoking? Have you been exercising on a regular basis? And that lowers your premium. You're creating an incentive for personal wellness, but you're talking about the current systems that don't give...
They don't work.
That don't invest in the kind of things that encourage...
And I guess if you allowed the experts to do what we're experts of, we would be able, the cost-saving money, example, you know, for me, a respiratory therapist who will work in a nursing home to help those residents prevent pneumonia, and I could...the millions of dollars that that would save Medicare because the nurses are busy doing nursing things. They don't want to deal with that.
The preventative medicine issue is a powerful issue.
Yes.
And I'd love to hear more from you about it and maybe get you to put pencil and paper. I want to get to the next person, but let me say to you, though, what you're hearing here is someone that is struggling within the current Medicare system that, for some of you that have hair the same color as mine, already know that Medicare doesn't cover a lot.
No.
The overwhelming majority of people on Medicare right now feel the need to have a Medigap policy, and another centerpiece of this bill is $500 billion in proposed cuts in Medicare. Now, everybody in Washington, D.C. says that, and then they push an elbow at each other because they know they're not gonna do it.
They could.
But just so you understand, people that say that this bill is gonna save money in the deficit, they are saying with a straight face that they're gonna cut a half a trillion dollars out of an already woefully underfunded program and system.
However, there are best...yes, absolutely, but there are best practices that are not being used.
That are not being done now.
No, they're not even being looked at.
It's great.
So I have a request. If you would please contact Mike Ross, who has actually written House Representative Bill 1077 and co-sponsor, and what this bill is, is to amend it to allow respiratory therapists to at least be reimbursed. That would be a start of dealing with at least part of that. Thank you.
Hand the bill to the guys in the back.
I will indeed.
Mike's a good friend of mine from Arkansas, and I'll talk to him.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Congressman. My name is Rick Vitato. And my problem is with the health care. I'm lucky I'm standing here now. Our family just experienced a tremendous problem. My brother's lucky to be alive. I finally got him convinced to go to the hospital with me, and it was machines keeping him alive, and now he's doing better, but he would not go to the doctor because he couldn't afford health care. For 55 years, he could, but with health care going up so much, he couldn't afford it no more. Now, we're looking at over six-digit figures of hardship on our family. My problem is, I hear you talk, think you're a good guy, Congressman, but I tell you, I think we do a little double-talking here. You guys had the White House for eight years, the Congress and the Senate for six, and it's had the opportunity to resolve a lot of health care issues and pass reform of health care. Now, we got another party that's trying, and you guys are... Now, we've got another party that's trying, and you guys are a party of no. And I have a reform healthcare. Now, we've got another party that's trying, and you guys are a party of no. And I have a problem with that. My brother is in critical condition and was fighting for his life, and he's lucky to be alive now. When we talk about the healthcare, just here, just a few years ago where I worked at, 200 people lost their jobs, and a company closed the doors and filed bankruptcy. They was a self-funded company. Every one of us got nailed on healthcare. You talked about your wife. My wife was pregnant. I got nailed for $5,000 because I couldn't pick up Cobra, because you can't pick up Cobra if they're self-funded. Now, if we could have healthcare where we could pick up pre-existing, I could have went out here and got pre-existing. I could have went out here and got something to assist my brother. Now, my family's in a hardship, and we can talk all we want. We've got a serious problem with healthcare. I wish all of you guys in Washington would actually sit down and get your heads together instead of fighting so much. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. And number one, I'm glad you got your brother to the hospital. God bless him. And let me just say, I understand the frustration with the head knocking. And I want to concede the point that when Republicans were in charge, they didn't take this on. They didn't deal with it. In fact, they did a number of things I didn't agree with. Begin with doubling the national debt in the first six years of this decade that I strongly opposed in my own party, my own president. But I want to assure you that the "party of no" thing, it's a catchy phrase and a catchy label, but if you go to GOP.gov, you can read in statutory language the legislation I described at the opening of this meeting. The Republicans have offered a bill that would deal with pre-existing conditions, that would deal with lowering the cost of healthcare through malpractice reform, and would allow families like yours to look all over the country for health insurance that would meet their needs during times of transition, or employment, or otherwise, by buying across state lines. So I take your point. Looking in the past, the rearview mirror, there's plenty of blame to go around. But to me, that's no excuse for the one-sided, single-party, heavy-handed, backdoor deal approach that's going on right now. We may have a modicum of agreement on that process being frustrated. I agree strongly on that. Go to the next.
Congressman Mike, I'm glad to have you here today.
Thank you.
I'm Joseph Lamar. I retired from the military, and I don't have any problem with the healthcare because we're covered pretty well on that. But what I was wondering today is if there's, if there could be any litigation brought against the senators and representatives who have sold their souls, sold their constituents, and sold our country down the drain on this program that's going on now. I just wondered if there's anything can be done about that.
Well, there's something can be done in November about that. But let me also say, before that, long before that, I'm somebody, and maybe, you know, maybe I'm just hard-headed, and I've been accused of worse, all right? But I don't think this thing is over. I don't think this thing is over by a long shot. The more the American people have looked at this government takeover of healthcare that's being forced through the Congress, the less they like it. And I'm reminded of, particularly, I can say this with respect to somebody who's worn the uniform of the United States and understands what makes this country great, reminded of a story Alexander Hamilton told, he was giving some French diplomat a tour of the Capitol Building back at the outset of the country. And the guy looked down onto the floor of the House of Representatives in the original well, and it was kind of loud and kind of obnoxious, and the French diplomat kind of sniffed that it was a little unruly down there. And apparently, Alexander Hamilton said to him, quote, "Here, sir, the people govern." And I believe that's still true. And I believe that turnout on a blustery day like today in Wells County, Indiana, and what we've seen since last summer at town hall meetings, the flood of emails and telephone calls, if people will continue to let their voices be heard, we can hit the reset button on this healthcare reform bill, and we can work together to build reforms that'll make sense for the American people and for future generations. So I'm not giving up on being able to stop this bill by a long shot, but at the end of the day, the American people will, if they're not heard between now and November, I guarantee you they'll be heard in November. Hey, Reverend. Good seat.
Mike, this is Cindy Oskar. I think the concern I have is that we seem to be in a rush to do something that's been out of control for a long, long time. And we want to push this so we can say we got it done in the first term of President Barack Obama. And I think we need to stop, hit the reset button, stop, look at it in open light, look at it in the room with everybody at the table. There seems to be an issue of, we were talking about bipartisanism during the election, but suddenly we find a president who finds himself meeting in private chambers with his Democratic colleagues in the House and the Senate to discuss issues without the presentation, representation of the GOP party as well. And I think that's part of the problem. It's not been bipartisan. And I think we need to slow down, put the bill out in open light where everybody can see it, and talk about it openly and fairly, and look at what the real issues are. I think it's interesting that this week, and I'm going to get to a question here in just a minute.
Please.
We do have the announcement of resignation of two significant senior senators, I believe, who are resigning. I don't know what the nature behind that is. But, and I don't take a lot of stock in a lot of the internet stuff that I see around, but the one that really surprises me, and I guess concerns me, is apparently our head of the representatives, House Representatives, Nancy Pelosi, has purchased a new airplane whereby that she can fly from Washington to California from Friday, Thursday to Monday or whatever, spending significant dollars of the United States government money in order to be transported from Washington to California so that she doesn't have to fly commercially, as I'm assuming that you do, and a lot of others do. I don't know what her deal is, but she's not any better than you and I are. She gets up and puts her slacks and her skirts on the same way the rest of us does. And I think she might be amazed what she might hear on the airplane if she were on the plane with everybody else. So that's sort of my exclamation point with my question. But I guess my question, what's the hurry? I know we need a reform, but what's the hurry? And I know you may not be able to answer that, but...
Well, I, number one, I'll leave your comments about the Speaker and her travel and her...
I just needed to say that open there.
Well, I'll leave it there. Let me speak to, I think you really asked the right question. And I don't think it's a conservative or a liberal question. You know, the interesting thing that's happened in the last month is how many liberals in this country, Howard Dean among them, have come out and opposed this bill. And this is an issue. And I go back to the gentleman who spoke earlier, who said when Republicans were in charge, they didn't get this done. Absolutely right. Point taken. But let me emphasize again, this is an issue. A lot of people talk about one-sixth of the economy. This is not going to affect one-sixth of the economy alone. This is going to affect 100% of the American people. At the most precious and vulnerable moment in the life of your family, you are going to, the policies and decisions that are made here are going to bear upon the life of your spouse, your children, your grandchildren. And it's just, number one, it's not the thing that you ought to hurry. Period. And number two, if I can say, it also, I just believe it's wrong, and it's really against any historical precedent for legislation of this size to do this on a strictly partisan basis. I mean, when Medicare passes in the 1960s, a lot of Republicans opposed it. I don't remember the exact numbers. It's pretty close to half the Republicans in the House and Senate voted for it. Okay? I mean, you can look up the exact numbers and correct me, but it was a lot. The same thing went when Social Security passed. A lot of Republicans opposed it on philosophical grounds back in the 1930s, but a large number of Republicans in the House and Senate voted for it. They were, when those two bills passed, they were truly the product of bipartisan, a bipartisan process that achieved a consensus. I'm not commenting on the consensus that was achieved, I'm just saying it was that process. The idea that you would pass a bill of this magnitude that bears upon the lives of every American for generations to come on strictly party lines, to me, is unconscionable. And the fact that they cannot, they cannot bring forward any Republican support of any note. One in the House voted for it, if memory serves, none in the Senate. I think that ought to be a flashing red light in the Democratic majority in the administration's eye that is saying, this isn't it. And so I want to affirm your statement as to what the hurry is, whether it's being driven by a political agenda, whether it's being driven by the belief that there won't be a 60 votes in the Senate a year from, I don't, that would be pure speculation on my part. But I do believe it's important to reflect on how significant this legislation is, and why the process of achieving some modicum of consensus is a protection of the American people and always has been. You know, we've gone from a single-payer debate to a single-party debate. And that ought not to be the way you build legislation that deals with every American for the next century or more. Let me recognize this gentleman, but also, if there are topics off healthcare that you'd like to speak to, please feel free. There's other things in the news, and I'm happy to reflect on them. Sir?
Steve Huffman. Glad you're here, Mike.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm the local representative for the Tea Party movement that I got involved in.
Good for you.
I'm going to switch the subject to independent business, which is what I'm in. A lot of times, it seems like we've got a lot of issues, but you talk about the Constitution, getting back to the principle of freedoms and liberties, but so much of the stuff coming out of Washington seems to be infringing on that freedom and liberty as far as a businessman to run, rise, to my own efforts. I'm burdened with so many other things that affect my productivity. And I commend you for showing up here today. We've invited the other two senators to several meetings, did not even have the courtesy to show up. You are one of our representatives. I want to thank you for that.
Good to know.
But I guess the thing I wonder, up there, isn't there anything we can do to get back to the foundation of the Constitution and quit infringing on our rights and liberties?
Yeah. Well, Steve, let me, it's Steve, right?
Yes.
Let me, number one, thank you for your kind words, but number two, tell you, you're doing it. You're doing it. I mean, I know Washington likes to sneer at Tea Party movement. I had the great privilege of addressing the Tea Party in my hometown at Donner Park this spring, and I was, had the profound privilege of being able to address the National Tea Party on September the 12th. I know the New York Times said there were only a couple of thousand people there. And Fox News Channel reported that there were a billion, but the truth is, there were, maybe you were among them, Steve, there, by my lights, there were between a half a million and a million people in Washington DC who'd set aside their productive lives just to go there and to take a stand for freedom and liberty and limited government and personal and fiscal responsibility, and it was inspiring to me. That's why I have said, since I got off the plane, I was in Afghanistan and started my year. I arrived in 2010 terribly encouraged, but I'm not encouraged by what I see in Washington DC. Heavens, no. But I'm terribly encouraged by men and women like yourself, who have businesses to run, families to raise, lives to live, but you have said, you know what? I'm going to become involved. And to see a crowd like this out on a snowy day, to see the hundreds who were here in Bluffton the last time we were here, to read my email, I read all my mail, to read my emails and letters from all over the country, and hear people, and how many letters begin with, I've never been involved before, "but." Had a gentleman at a town hall meeting in Muncie say to me yesterday, let me tell you why I put on the uniform and why I walked into harm's way for this country, and it was for freedom. It wasn't to have a government that would take care of me, it was for a government to create and preserve the conditions of freedom where I could take care of myself. And keep doing what you're doing. That's my answer to you. Keep doing what you're doing, it's making an enormous difference, and I commend for it. It's American citizenship at its best. And I commend for it. It's American citizenship at its best. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Mike. My name is Jerry Rousch.
Hi, Jerry.
And I want to tell you that my wife and I try to pray for you every day.
Thank you, Jerry.
And my question and comment is in regards to American citizens on both sides of the age spectrum. I'm wondering about the current proposals in consideration right now, either from the House or the Senate, in regards to healthcare reform, and how that would affect unborn children or unborn citizens. And on the other side of the spectrum, how it might affect the aged population in terms of, I don't know, provisions that might preclude medical assistance in some type of degenerative condition? And could they use private funds to purchase treatment options if they are tied into a, into a government proposal? You know what I'm saying? I've heard that that might be the case, and so I just would like to know that. I have some aging parents, and wondering about what your thoughts are on that.
Well, Jerry, number one, thank you for your prayers. I don't take such statements lightly. My wife and I rely on prayer support, and we're grateful. With regard to the issue of life, and this, again, I use some pretty strong language about how, I think it is appalling that negotiations on healthcare legislation are taking place behind closed doors right now, because there are major issues that are being resolved. Chief among them is how we're going to deal with taxpayer support for elective abortion in this country. Right now, the House bill, thanks to bipartisan cooperation, about 60 Democrats and every House Republican got behind and stood firm for what came to be known as the Stupak-Pitts Amendment. This was an amendment that essentially took the historic restrictions of the Hyde Amendment. The Hyde Amendment's been on the books for a generation. And essentially, the Hyde Amendment said that no taxpayer dollars could ever be used to support or promote abortion at home and abroad, except in cases of rape, incest, life of the mother. There was carve-out, but no elective abortion. Taxpayers overwhelmingly supported that provision. A Democrat named Bart Stupak stood firm against his own speaker and against his own leadership, and fought, and got that amendment passed. And I salute him for it. In the Senate, there was a less successful result. I believe it was Senator Nelson, who was the holdout on the right-to-life issue, and he, if memory serves, ended up agreeing to language that, quite frankly, legal scholars, leaders in the pro-life community, and informed legislators know, the language in the Senate bill does not protect pro-life taxpayers from seeing their dollars support a system that will provide premium support to health insurance that covers elective abortion. They twisted a couple ways around and say, well, no, it'll come from premiums. But, look, you're going to have a government-run insurance system, these government-run exchanges, and one of the health insurance plans in that exchange will be mandated to cover elective abortion, and premium supports will cover that. Period, paragraph. The only protection pro-life taxpayers have is if the Stupak language is in the bill. And right now, the administration opposes that language. The Senate took a different tack and opposes that language. And I'd love to tell you how that debate is going, but I haven't got any idea, because it's happening behind closed doors somewhere, with a couple of lobbyists in the room, representatives of the administration, and Democratic leadership in Congress. And I actually heard a rumor driving down in the snow from Fort Wayne that the bill may be hatched in the next couple of days as a done, so I don't know. We're waiting to see. But I will say that I would hope, and I may even pray, that all 60 of the Democrats who voted for the Stupak Amendment will stand for life and vote against this bill if the Stupak language is not in it. That's the only protection we have for pro-life taxpayers. On the other side of life, you're talking about the beginning of life... On the other side of life, you're talking about the beginning of life issues, which I cherish because I'm pro-life, I don't apologize for it, but end-of-life issues, you know, this has been a contentious issue, and, but the, the young lady who stood up was a healthcare worker, Jennifer, still here. Jennifer's talking to us about working in a system full-time with scarce resources. Their proposal, at very minimum, expands the obligations of the government in public systems, okay? Greatly expands the government's role. We are running record deficits in debt right now. Congress in the next two months is going to raise the debt ceiling by another trillion dollars and more to keep our bills going, so we can borrow more money from China to fund government today. And I'm, all I can say to you on the subject of end-of-life issues, and the whole comparative analysis question and the so-called hot rhetoric around death panels, is the reason why you don't want the government anymore involved in the beginning of life or the end of life than is possible is because government deals in scarce resources. Government, every day, Congress sits down and picks winners and losers. We don't cover respiratory therapy, we do cover this, we don't cover that, we do cover this. That's what, that's what the allocation of public resources is all about. And so it's inconceivable to me, as you expand the federal government's role in our healthcare economy, to the extent that's being discussed today, that that will not ultimately bear upon the availability of treatments and resources to, particularly to senior citizens in this country. And be candid with you, and the President was never more candid than on that ABC Town Hall meeting. I don't know if you remember, but late in the night, ABC had a town hall meeting at the White House, months ago. The President made a comment that, you know, you may, if you may be 90 years old and we may just, and you may need surgery, we may just need you to take a pill. President said that, and I think he was honest about it, that's candid, that's straightforward. Government is in the business of allocating scarce resources, and I think it, I think we ought to think long and hard and take our time before we expand the size and scope of government in those healthcare decisions, for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Congressman Mike. I appreciate your service to our country.
Thanks.
I'll start off with that. And a couple of comments. You talked about, you know, the things that you would like to push for after you defeat this healthcare travesty to lower healthcare costs, but I didn't hear you mention health savings accounts.
Oh.
And I have a health savings account, and if I'm healthy for a few years, that account builds up, so that if I would lose my job, I could afford to buy insurance, and, you know, for the catastrophic things that would happen to me, I have insurance for that. My other comment is, you talked about, we could get rid of these crooked politicians in November. Are you concerned that, right now, Acorn is in charge of the census-taking? And how concerned are you in that whenever Acorn has already been indicted in several different places for the last election fraud? And the two college students that went into three different places and got Acorn to tell them how to start an illegal whorehouse, basically, with underage immigrants? And why are we federally funding Acorn yet at this point?
Right. Well, let me say, we did battle after those recent, I've been battling the so-called affordable housing slush fund for years. I mean, I was opposed to Acorn before it was cool. You can check my record. I'm very pleased that because of these recent, what was really outstanding journalism by these two young college students, who went in and revealed to the country an aspect of the character of a number of these organizations, that Congress voted overwhelmingly to deny funding to Acorn. That's now the subject of litigation, it's bottled up in the process. I can get you a letter to tell you the status of that, but we're in the process of, I just don't, I believe Acorn is an entirely discredited organization that in many jurisdictions is just short of criminal enterprise and shouldn't get a dime of federal money. And so, let me talk about, let me talk about health savings accounts, though, because I love you referencing that, and I only left it out of our proposals, it's in there if you go to GOP.gov on the internet, but let me, let me give you a fair warning. If this bill that's been passed passes into law, health savings accounts pretty much go away. Because they do not, in the healthcare exchanges, they mandate what health insurance companies have to cover, and they mandate deductible amounts. A health savings account is billed on a high deductible amount that you create, then an account that your employer or you put in the savings account and encourages you, it's an incentive to stay healthy, I think it's one of the great incentive ideas. If, if, if this government takeover of healthcare takes effect, not only does Medicare Advantage go away, which we talked about before, seniors that like Medicare Advantage can pretty much kiss that goodbye, but health savings accounts also are, are essentially prohibited and would go away accordingly. You would be allowed to go to the healthcare exchange, purchase one of a series of quasi-private health insurance plans, they're private companies, but all of their, what they cover, how they cover it, what the deductible is, all dictated by the federal government. And so it would, it would do away with health insurance plans like you have with your HSA. Thank you. Yes, yes?
I'm Ellen.
Hi, Ellen.
And thank you. Thank you for standing between us and what Washington wants to do to us, to make us a subject people, in so many ways, economic and moral, many ways. Especially, thank you for standing in the gap for the unborn children and their mothers, and also for your work to keep our freedom of speech, which, if Washington has its way, will be altered. Thank you.
Ellen, thank you for your encouragement, and you mentioned the, the freedom of speech issue. It's a, it's a passion of mine. I've co-authored legislation with Senator Lugar that has now passed the House and passed the Judiciary Committee in the Senate that would protect a reporter's right to keep sources confidential. I believe in a free and independent press. But I also authored legislation that would prevent this or any other president from ever bringing back the fairness doctrine through the Federal Communications Commission. I, it's, and people forget, the editorial page in the newspaper is as much a part of the newspaper as the front page. And I've been a champion of, of the news gathering process, news reporting, but also, you know, what you hear on talk radio, and I love most of it, and I used to be in that business, but that's editorial comment, and it is protected by the First Amendment. And there, there are forces in Washington DC, Center for American Progress produced a report about two years ago, talking about the structural imbalance of American talk radio. There are people that are talking about bringing back some version of the fairness doctrine or new rules under the rubric of localism. The only people that ought to decide what's on the radio dial in, in Fort Wayne, in Bluffton, in Indiana, and in America are the people that turn the knobs on the dial. Period, paragraph. I'll fight for that. Thanks, Ellen. Yes, sir?
Congressman, my name is Michael Yancey.
Hi, Michael.
You used the word offended when you talked about the healthcare legislation. Well, that's not the word I would use. I would use the word infuriated. I'm a 20-year veteran of the United States military. I've served overseas, I've seen the Berlin Wall, I have served in Korea, I have been in, in a lot of these countries like France and Britain that are socialized. I understand what, what it means to live under a system of government like that. And what infuriates me the most is that I don't see leadership in Washington DC telling the American people that there is a, there is a big difference between a country that is founded on freedom and liberty and one that is ruled by socialism and communism. I see things going on right now, right now, that 20 years ago, I could not ever believe that I would be here seen today. And it just absolutely, totally infuriates me. Mike, I appreciate what you do, but we've got to see some leadership in Washington DC. And I'm not talking about going back just to the election of this president, I'm talking about going back for 50, 60 years. It's been a long time since we've seen any leadership out of Washington DC. We had a brief respite under a great man by the name of Ronald Reagan, and I was proud to have called him my commander in chief. We had a brief respite under a great man by the name of Ronald Reagan, and I was proud to have called him my commander in chief. I just want to know, as an American, I just want to know, where is that leadership going to come from? Because you're right, there is an election in 2010. And I would ask, if you go back and you tell the RNC and Michael Steele that there's a lot of people out here that were Republicans, you may not want to count, we may not, you may not be able to count on us this time, because we are tired.
That's right, that's right. Yeah. Thank you, Michael. Thanks for your service to the country, and it obviously continues today. Appreciate your words. Sir?
Mike, I'm Lonnie. I want to thank you for being a congressman and stuck to your values and not being swayed by the politics in Washington.
Thank you, Lonnie.
I have two comments. You said you've been to Afghanistan.
Yes.
I know Congressman Soudra's changed his view over the troop surge. I want to know if you think there's actually enough troops to do the right job over there? And the second is, General McChrystal has just came out with a comment that he wants less ground to, air-to-ground support for our troops because of collateral damage. That worries me that it puts our troops in more harm's way, and how can they tell a Taliban from a civilian over there?
Is it Lonnie?
Monte.
Monte, forgive me, you can stay at the mic if you want, Lonnie. Well, let me say, I did, I left the day after Christmas, Mrs. Pence's permission, and I went to Afghanistan with a bipartisan group, about four Democrats, four Republicans. Spent a day in Kabul, we met with General McChrystal personally, General Hodges, a lot of our senior team in the country. Also spent 90 minutes with President Hamid Karzai, with Speaker of the Lower House, and then, most importantly, we got out to Kandahar, and then he loaded out to the Argabad Valley, and met with Lieutenant General Genio and the team that's on the ground there. And let me tell you, I, I told the President in February, and I, and I kept my word to him that if, that if he would give our soldiers the resources they needed to get the job done and come home safe, he'd have our support regardless of politics. And I expressed, the night of the President's West Point address, I expressed concern about the announced timetable for withdrawal, July 2011 beginning withdrawal. I just don't think, I don't think it ever makes sense on a battlefield to tell the enemy when you're going to stop fighting. And so I, I, I was pleased the President responded to the call for reinforcements, but I went in wanting to ask some very tough questions. What I can report to you, as General McChrystal actually answers to people like me, but I answer to people like you, so I'll report to you, that I'm told that they have the resources and the personnel in the decision that the President has made to get the job done.
Okay.
If they have the time to do it. That's the issue. I talked to the Afghani leadership, I talked to rank and file military Afghans in Argabad Valley, and they said, look, the Taliban's been using that July 2011 announced deadline for recruitment purposes. And they've been walking up to people saying, see, they're leaving, we're winning. And, you know, look, I don't mind, you know, like Michael back there, you've got other soldiers in the room, we've already spoken, soldiers always have deadlines. These guys never do anything without a deadline. But you don't publish it, that's the point. Would I like our soldiers to start to, to be moving out of Afghanistan by July 2011? You bet. But we ought to be moving out on victory, and we ought to be moving out with the enemy having been completely defeated, and the Afghan National Army able to stand up and defend themselves. And the only other issue here is, we've got to have a credible government in Kabul. And we really, you know, we, quite frankly, this bipartisan delegation really locked arms and sent a deafening message straight to President Karzai, that the upcoming parliamentary elections cannot be the fiasco that the presidential elections were last fall. We urged President Karzai to delay the parliamentary elections, to pass major election reform, so that his people and the people of the wider community in the world would recognize that they had a national legislature that was truly and fairly and openly elected. And he hasn't yet agreed to that, but we're going to continue to work in a bipartisan way to push for that. So assuming that they can have a credible government that stood up, and assuming our guys are given the time, I'm told by our team on the ground that they, the President has given them what they need, in terms of resources and tactical maneuverability to get the job done, and I believe they can do it. Make no mistake about it, we have the finest military in the history of the world, and they can get this done. The strategy, the strategy that is employed in Afghanistan today is what worked in 2007 in Iraq. It did. And I, you know, I want to give the President credit where credit's due. He opposed that surge in Iraq, he said that it would make things worse, he was wrong. But, you know, in politics, that, that words, you know, it's, it would have been, you could have understood in a political context if he would have said, well, I'm all this way, I've said it's, but he didn't. He listened to his commanders, he took time on it, and he made a decision, and those people on the ground, who I trust, are telling me, we've got what we need. So we need to pray for them, we need to make sure they have their resources, their families are taken care of back here at home, but if they have the time, I think they've got the talent and they've got the resources. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Yes, sir? Got time for about 10 more minutes here, so queue isn't too long. Yes, sir?
Hi, Mike, I'm Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Speaking to you from Mike. And I'd like to comment on Amber. I've called, she brought up the constitutionality and
Yeah.
... the prison sentences for people who don't buy health insurance. I've called Senator By's office an uncountable amount of times now, and I've told him several times, or his, his answering machine mostly, that I thought he had to come to Austin and tell carpenters how he could possibly support a bill like this, and I still am waiting. I did get a reply from him about cap and trade, so somebody got their wires crossed there. But I, I just wanted to point out his total inaccessibility. I mean, he's my senator, too, from Indiana, and I would think that after a person is called 20 times, 25 times, you'd at least get some kind of a response from him. The, the point, the other point that I wanted to make is, I've seen this in Washington now several times, and I run a small business, and there's no possible way that I could make a contract to build a house with somebody on the order that we're making our legislation now in Washington. Senator Reed comes out, and the, the bill before Congress, I won't even call it a healthcare bill, it's 1,900 pages, 2,000 pages, who knows? And Senator Reed himself says, well, I can't read it, because I really couldn't understand it even if I did read it. And places like C-SPAN and stuff like that, don't pick up on that and just blast that all over the airwaves, tells me that something's structurally incorrect in the whole process. I'm of average intelligence, and there's no possible way that I could read a 2,000-page bill and begin to comprehend it in any way, shape or form. So as far as I'm concerned, anything that's before Congress, that's more than a, an easily readable bill, should just be kicked out now and done away with. And then the people who do vote for it should have to stand up before me and the rest of the American people and look us in the eye and say, yes, I have read and understand the bill currently before the Congress.
It's Greg, right?
Greg, yeah.
Greg, I, I love your analogy about, about you couldn't build a house with the carpenter designs that, you know.
No possible way. My contracts are 16 pages long.
But we're building, I love your analogy, I may well take it back to the floor of the Congress.
Feel free.
We're building healthcare.
As long as I get a residual.
The only, the only difference, Greg, between what you do and what Congress is doing is, you're building a structure for one family to live in, we're building some structure that every American family is going to have to live in for generations, and we're doing it without plans.
Yes, yeah.
We're doing it without plans. I think there's a, I think there's almost a, that's almost a parable which you laid out there. It's really inspiring to me, and it is how it's happening right now. I mean, I have to tell you, men and women, whether it was the National Energy Tax and the cap and trade bill, whether it was the the cap and trade bill, whether it was the massive stimulus bill, I mean, when the... In this Congress, when you drop a bill that's 700, 800, 1,000, 1,200 pages long the day before it's going to be voted on, let me just help you out. Nobody read that bill. Nobody. And the fact that this bill is being cobbled together behind closed doors by a handful of leaders of one party in the House, the Senate, the White House, and lobbyists, means it's going to be sprung on us again, big, tall stack, lots of things scribbled into margins, and we're going to drop the gavel and vote on it again. And it's really... I'll go to Michael's line. It is infuriating. And I really do believe... I really believe in, you know, an appropriations bill that's long and lengthy and includes lots of sewers and pipes and different things, or military hardware. I don't know that every member of Congress ought to have to read every line of every one of those bills. You can trust your staff to do it. You can trust the committee staff to do it. But a bill, any bill of this magnitude, every member of Congress ought to be required to read the bill. And I don't think it's unreasonable that people would expect them that. But to be honest with you, can I just say also?
Sure.
I'd be almost as happy if they just read the Constitution of the United States of America a little more.
Sure.
It's shorter. It's shorter.
That's right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Greg. Well said. I love your construction analogy. Hello. Thank you for coming.
My name is Mary. I have a concern with Acorn and the fact that all of this backdoor stuff, closed doors. What can you assure us that in November, we will have a free election? I can't really believe the election that we just had was absolutely free and that he did win. I mean, he wasn't asked to produce a birth certificate. She went in, Pelosi went in and shut off the electricity so people couldn't vote on something that's been quite a while ago. But I thought that was a little absurd. And I'm just concerned that they're being so blatant about all of this stuff. It's like they're shoving it in our face. They can't think that we won't try to vote them out in November. So, because they are being so blatant, I feel they've got something up their sleeves come November.
Well, I understand and appreciate your concern about Acorn. And let me just say, we have made great strides this year in exposing this organization, in pushing it out of the census collection process, and in pushing it out of the federal trough. But we still have a long way to go. But I still believe... Remember, elections are administered by the state governments and state election boards, and ultimately, I think in Indiana and the jurisdiction of the Secretary of State. And I believe that... I believe that in every jurisdiction of this country, with some individual exceptions, that we know how to do elections. This isn't a banana republic. There are men and women in both political parties in offices who administer elections who understand that if you don't have ballot integrity, you don't have any... You don't have democracy. And so, I want to encourage you in that regard. I believe the will of the American people is going to be registered in the November elections. I believe it will. We have time for one more, and we'll wrap up. And I don't like to run out of these things, so I'm going to visit a little bit with you all and then be on the road by pretty close to 4 o'clock. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike. I guess we'll save the best for last here. Anyway, I have a comment. I want to say that I appreciate the work that you do in the Congress. And I would like to know if there's any other legislation that has in its verbiage that the bill cannot be changed or amended, or with the conference committee, as the health bill has in it. Is that constitutional? And, you know, what would that... Where does that stand?
You talking about the language in the legislation that binds future Congresses?
Right. Where there's nothing can be changed. I think, you know, that's kind of scary.
Well, number one, one Congress, it's axiomatic under our system of government that one Congress may not bind another Congress. It can't. The people govern here. So, the people's representatives in the next Congress want to do something different, they can do it. I've heard about this language. I specifically haven't looked at that line, but I've read reports about it, and I'm going to drill down into it when I hit Washington first of the week. But let me say that Washington first of the week, but let me say, there is a practical part of this that ought to create some urgency for you, for everyone here, for anybody that's looking in. And that is, I believe that while there would be much that could be done through legal challenges, if the Republicans took the House of Representatives in 2010 and came back into power, there's much that could be done. There's much that would be hard to undo in this bill. I mean, the truth of the matter is, the reason this bill has to be stopped now is because once you set up these massive government exchanges, once businesses start canceling the health insurance to their employees, and people are now getting their insurance in these exchanges, and these exchanges have taxpayer subsidies and premium support, and these exchanges don't make fiscal sense, and everybody's starting to be frustrated because scarce federal resources can't go into them, I think it puts you on a pathway towards socialized medicine. My point is, there's some parts of this that in the marketplace itself become irreversible. And that's why I refuse to give up this fight. I... We have got to stop this bill now. Future Congresses can make changes in the healthcare system, but if, for instance, as one estimate about nine months ago suggested, if 100 million Americans lose the health insurance they have through their employer and find themselves in these government-run exchanges, Congress can't pass a law that makes your employer offer health insurance again and makes you go back to your employ... You follow me on that? And so, once the genie gets out of the bottle here, and I really believe some... And not every Democrat in Congress is a left-wing liberal, but a lot of them are. And I believe most of those in the leadership of their party right now are left-wing liberals. And I believe they know this system, once put into effect, will set into motion a process that moves Americans from employer-based insurance to these exchanges. These exchanges will not be fiscally solvent, and it will set us on a pathway towards socialized medicine. Barney Frank himself said, being chased by some YouTube camera person, he said, "Why aren't you supporting a single payer healthcare, Canadian-style, socialized medicine?" And he said, "Well, this plan would be the fastest way to get..." I'm paraphrasing now, but he said, "It's the fastest way to get to single payer." And I think that they know this. So, yes, there are changes that we can make, and we will make them, and we'll fight, if this bill, God forbid, becomes law, we'll fight to repeal every aspect of it and pass legislation that will lower the cost of health insurance, deal with runaway lawsuits, and deal with pre-existing conditions. But my concern is, once this ship is launched out of the harbor, this massive, big government takeover of healthcare, it's going to be awfully hard to ever turn that ship back. Ronald Reagan said famously, "The closest thing to eternal life on this earth is a federal program." And so, my point to each one of you who share my concern, maybe not all my concerns, maybe there's parts of this bill that you like, but maybe at the end of the day, you just think, "This is no way to run a railroad. This is no way to build a house. This is no way to build a healthcare system." I encourage you to let your voice be heard. Pick up the phone. Make that 20-second call to our junior senator. Call members of the House and Senate. Send emails. Tell your neighbors to do likewise. Tell your employees to do likewise. Tell the people at church and at the drugstore. Because I really believe if we will let our voice be heard, we can stop this bill and immediately go to work on healthcare reform that'll be in the broad, long-term interest of the American people. May not have everything in it that I like. May not have everything in it that you like, but I believe the possibility of responsible, incremental healthcare reform that focuses on lowering the cost of health insurance is there. But we've got to stop this bill first. So, let me thank you for your question.
Thank you. I would like to make one comment and thank C-SPAN for being here and make a suggestion to them. Why do we have some closed doors? As long as the debate is going on as a protest from America, that the Democrats choose not to allow open debate on this subject.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, let me... Thank you for your comment. Let me thank you all for your time. I know we started a bit late, but I wanted to give it the full hour. Let me say that the programs that you received are not just an affectation for notes. If you look on the back, you'll see our web address, mikepence.house.gov, all of the local addresses and phone numbers for our offices in Muncie, Anderson, and Richmond, and Washington. I'm a really easy guy to reach if I work for you because I read all my mail, and I read all my email. Just ask my staff. They'll tell you, "I never got on an airplane. I don't have this big packet." Now, some people write to me around the country because they watch cable news. I don't read all that stuff. Some of the nice stuff, but I don't read all of it. But anything that comes from any of the 19 counties that I represent, you can reach me. And I welcome it. I'm grateful for it. I hope you will avail yourself of it. And lastly, let me, you know, let me just say, I really do believe that these are difficult times in the life of our nation. We've got challenges abroad, from Afghanistan to Iraq, now to Yemen. We've got threats coming close to home and hitting home. We've got the worst economy in 25 years, and we've got a massive expansion of government spending under both political parties. We've got this rampant era of borrowing and spending and bailouts and takeovers. And I know it's easy to give way to despair. It's easy to give way to frustration. But I encourage you to do otherwise. Because I want you to know, I'm... As someone that has been... I started my career as a Democrat, and I've been in office nine years as a Republican. Never in my 30 years in and around politics have I seen the American people more engaged, more informed, giving voice to their values more effectively than I have in the last 12 months in this country. And I'm encouraged by it. You should be encouraged by it. I'm absolutely convinced, every time the American people have stood up in the life of this nation and demanded that Washington, D.C., start being every bit as good as they are, every bit as strong as they are, Washington, D.C. has followed suit. So, I know we're going to work our way through this. I know we're going to get it right. And with your help and with God's help, we'll all be a part of that. So, thank you, and God bless you.